Fourth, 2020 Duval City Council Meeting to Order at 7:02 PM. Clerk, would you please take the role? Oh, I'm sorry, flag salute first. Trying to work off of two different screens here without a paper copy in front of me. So would you all please join me for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now clerk, would you please take the role?
Councilmember Brad Nicky. Councilmember Ira.
Councilmember McHenry.
Councilmember Remington.
Councilmember Hoag.
Here.
Councilmember Napland.
Councilmember Lengel.
We have a forum.
Thank you. Under additions and corrections to the agenda, under consent, please add payroll for July 20th, 2020 in the amount of $190,465.28. Payroll for August 5th, 2020 in the amount of $120,427.97. Claims for August 4th, 2020 in the amount of $219,757.99. Under new business, please remove number five. Contract for Complete Streets. Under new business, please add Agenda Bill 20-71. Approving resolution rejecting all bids submitted for the 2020 275th Avenue Northeast Complete Streets project. And clerk, you will likely need to catch me on this because I will be have written notes and open screens. And it might be a little bit different here. And then also under Mayor's Report, add Administration Update, which we did not have time for under Committee of the Whole. With that. Oops. Hold on just a moment. Are there any council members that would like to speak this evening? Okay, seeing none, I think everyone got stuff out during the order. Ms. Wyckoff?
I was just wondering if council would be interested in moving the Main Street art presentation to the first item in scheduled, underscheduled items, since we do have guests from that are not normally in attendance. Doesn't matter to me, I just thought I would throw it out there.
I'm not hearing them at all.
If that's for convenience, Mara, I'm fine with that. If we have folks in the audience that are here for a specific topic or to speak on an item.
All right, so with with that, then we will also move the Main Street Art Update up to the first item, underscheduled items. And so with that, do we have a motion to approve this evening's council agenda?
Mike Remington, so moved.
McHenry, second.
Mayor Portem Remington moved, Councilmember McHenry seconded for approval of the council agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
Mike Remington, so moved.
Second, McHenry.
Mayor Portem Remington moved, Councilmember McHenry seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Thank you, motion passes. And with that, we will move on to comments from the audience. I know that we have received two via email, so we'll start off with those being read into the record. Ms. Wyckoff was not sure that one of them would fit under the three minutes. But if it does, let's go ahead and read it, so thank you.
Okay, the first public comment was received from Heather Downing today at 1 o'clock in the afternoon. It reads as follows. Hello, when I first learned about the 275th project, my understanding was the city of Duval received a $200,000 grant to complete the sidewalk project that would, and that would be the total cost. I totally agree that Duval residents should have safe, accessible sidewalks throughout our wonderful city. However, we need to be fiscally responsible with all of our expenses, especially in the current environment, and raising taxes on families who are already stretched is not an option. The city has already spent part of the $200,000 grant on design, clearing, and an arborist, which appears to be around $50,000. The city recently received bids for the 275th project. The least expensive bid is $283,343, without any add-ons, flashing, crosswalk lights, and workout stations, plus the expenses that the city has already incurred. If all the add-ons are added to this project, plus the expenses already spent, it will cost close to $400,000 or more for a few short blocks of sidewalk that is on PSE-owned land. I do not approve of us spending 100 to 200,000 more dollars of Duval taxpayer dollars for this project. Thank you for all of your hard work, Heather Downing. The second one, I'm going to time myself because I may have to summarize and cut it short, and I've already notified the commenter about that. It was received from Aurora Irene Morgan today at 3:41. Both emails were sent to council this afternoon. This one reads, Dear Honorable Mayor Okalander and City Councilmembers, I discovered during this unprecedented pandemic requiring most everyone to use internet services from home that my household was not capable of an upgrade to the gigabyte internet speed that wave broadband sold to me because of limitations in the city's current infrastructure. Many citizens of our community have expressed internet concerns and have filed complaints to the FCC and broadband companies in regards to this issue. Is the city of Duval currently involved in improving our internet capabilities? On June 30th, 2020, I received an email from Washington State Department of Commerce's Broadband Office, which states that they are working on initiatives to advance the state's goal to have universal broadband access in Washington by 2024. Initiatives include a broadband access and speed survey, Public Works Board broadband construction grant and loan cycle opened July 30th through September 9th, 2020, offering approximately $18 million for low-interest loans and grants, and CERB rural broadband construction and planning funding. She then sent a link to additional information on that subject. An excerpt from their website states, many rural communities are already engaged in broadband projects and planning. In conjunction with this broadband office access and speed survey, the Public Works Board is conducting a planning assessment survey for local governments to assist in mapping and tracking these infrastructure projects across the state. The board currently has $18 million available for low-interest loans and grants for broadband construction projects. Please let me know, please let me know the city's plans to help our citizens receive the best internet services available, and if they are pursuing the initiatives offered by the state. If the city isn't currently involved with the state's initiatives, I respectfully ask and encourage the city council to be actively seeking ways to help our community get the broadband access we need. In addition, would it be possible to inform our city at large of the broadband access and speed survey so that, so the state can receive data from our community through the city's social media and communication sources? Thank you sincerely, Aurora Irene Morgan, Duval citizen.
Thank you. And is there anyone on the call this evening that would like to provide public comment?
I'm currently allowing all of them to talk, so give me just a minute. Okay, all of them are allowed to speak if they would like to unmute their phones or computers, and do so now.
I'm not seeing anyone, so going once, twice. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close comments from the audience. And we'll move on to schedule items, and we will go ahead and do the Main Street Art Update first. I believe Ms. McCoy is taking the lead on this one, or? Excellent, thank you for joining us.
Yeah, thank you for inviting me. It's an exciting project. And we have a little PowerPoint that we put together to share, and I'm happy to just zoom through it. I know you have a busy agenda, and I don't want to belabor these points, but I'll just share my screen and show you the PowerPoint, and I'm going to blow through it pretty quickly, and if you want me to slow down, speak up. Okay, here we are. Duval Cultural Commission is our mission, and you guys have seen a memo that a lot of...
Ms. McWinnie, I'm just seeing a white screen.
If you're having an issue, Alana emailed me the presentation, and so I could always go in if you can't pull it up, just let me know.
I think we can do this, right?
You just, you just need to pick the screen that you want to share.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can also share it as well if need be.
Is that it?
There it is.
There we go, okay, thank you.
All right, Duval Cultural Commission, that is our mission statement, which you've seen before. And the Cedar Plank Project started in 2008. There was a group of citizens that led this project, working with pomegranate, helping to create some more ambiance in the Main Street area. And they created the cedar planks that are much beloved, that you see. They're installed in 2009 and have been adored by many people. And over the past few years, they've gotten a little more weathered, they aren't as vibrant. There was a potential accident with one of them, so they need to be restored and upgraded. The initial plan was, that was part of the initial plan, was to keep the story alive by changing the planks out every so often, and so we're right on schedule to do that. So in 2019, we convened a committee to manage the replacement of 20 planks. So there's 10 light poles with a plank on each side. So we had a budget of $55,000, and this is our committee members listed here. We discussed it and did a little research and came up with a $5,000 amount for, to complete two hand-carved, stained, and stealed 18 by 18 inch by 2 inch boards. We looked at a lot of different options of phasing it and reducing the number of planks per year, and came up with replacing as many as possible this year would be the best alternative. It would save some staff time and be the most efficient in putting out the call to artists and getting crane to put these things up, etc. This is the budget we came up with. So to replace every plank was going to be $65,000, and we had $55,000, leaving a $10,000 shortfall. So we requested that money that had been allocated to redo the mural at the intersection of Main Street and Woodinville Duval Road would be allocated to this project. An approval was granted. We've also been working on a plan to ceremonially reveal these new carvings and have a kind of a special moment with the community to show the new art and show where we're going to put the existing planks, which we haven't figured out yet, but we will. So we put out a call to artists, and through a number of Zoom meetings, we reviewed the designs that were provided to us and selected five artists to create six different poles, so that's 12 planks. And with the city's support, with the council's support, we're recommending that the mayor authorize and sign contracts with each of the artists listed below in the amount of $500 to get to final design. We had two final designs come in from Dan Cotrell. And the other artists, we liked some of their work, but didn't, weren't ready to approve the final design. Councilmember Brad Nicky has offered to work with the artist to help create more of a story. And on this, you can see some of the tapert art. This is Lupin and Lily worked on those together. And as you see, they're not a final design, but they're, they just show a great deal of affection for the wood, and kind of exciting to see what they might look like when they're finished. We're hoping to award the artists contracts for $4,500 to complete the set of planks and have delivery in December 2020, if all things go on schedule. And then we'd like to recommend that the unspent $10,000, because we didn't actually come up with quite all the planks, be redirected to the Woodinville Duval Wall mural where we borrowed it from for the next year's budget. And we plan to request additional funding in '21, '22 budget cycle to complete the project and put out another call to artists and get the next four poles finished. And thank you so much. And I also especially want to appreciate Alana, who does so much work for this committee and really makes it happen, and is just a delight to work with. So just want to really thank her and see if you have any questions.
All right, thank you so much, Betsy, for that wonderful presentation, and thanks, Alana, for all your work on this. I do want to say that the committee put an extraordinary amount of work into this and looked at the historical context of what we've done in the past as well. And I think that selections that they've made are fantastic and really key to our local culture, as well as honoring some of our fantastic artists here in the valley. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions from council for Ms. McWinnie. And I cannot see hands up on my screen, so you'll have to like raise your hand. Councilmember Lengel.
I just wanted to say that I really like the direction of what's happening here. And I said I, I left a voicemail for Councilmember Brad Nicky, specific to that. I know the designs have a little more work, but there was a freshness to it, which I thought was really exciting. And I know part of that is just sort of the vibrancy of new colors. But I felt from a design standpoint, that's where I'm coming with the freshness. I just really appreciated seeing it, and I'm a, I'm a big fan of community art. Have a bunch of it in my house, and so, super excited. I hope there's an opportunity for us to really, really big time celebrate this in the community.
We, we hope to create something. And also, I don't know if I really talked about this, but we'd like those existing planks to be housed somewhere where the community can still see them. So, thank you.
Councilmember McHenry?
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone involved working on all of this. It's really exciting, especially given this year with so many events canceled. And I think this will just be really something fun to look forward to. So thanks for everything on that.
Thank you.
Mayor Portem Remington? You're on mute, Mayor Portem.
Betsy, thank you. You know, in our town, there are certain things that are part of that small-town atmosphere that everybody talks about, and that art is, is a big part of it. I think it's part of our, it really shows part of our heritage, but it's part of who we are, and thank you. I think it's the heart of our community.
Well, thank you guys for supporting this, and really thank Alana, because I'm just, I'm the puppet right here, but she's doing all the work, so. She's really the mastermind and the leader of us.
Right, any other council feedback this evening? Seeing none, I would, I know if Councilmember Brad Nicky were here this evening that she would be raving about all the work and, and the design choices. And so thank you for all that work, and I'm definitely looking forward to the final approval of these purchases and this process moving forward and the unveiling of this for our community. So I still have people come up to me from other communities and just speak so great about the planks that were done in 2009, and it really is something that brings pride to our community, so thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you all so much for allowing this opportunity.
You're very welcome.
Okay, good night, everyone.
Good night. And then, okay, so we'll move on to Mayor's Report. I'm going to exit my full screen here just a second before I get to the formal report. In general, it's definitely been, yet again, a busy couple of weeks. As Sean kind of alluded to, our emergency management stuff had to ramp up again based on everything else going on around the state. The Association of Washington Cities Legislative Priorities Committee met last Thursday. We had, we're working towards getting closer to that final agenda, and as mentioned before, broadband is on that list statewide. And as we mentioned during Committee of the Whole, that is becoming more of a priority for local governments as more cities continue to have experiences like ours where some people are underserved or not served at all, especially with that being out of our control as far as forcing service. Obviously, let's see, we had a call on Friday with the Seattle Foundation. It was the Snoke Valley Mayors, because the Snoke, or I'm sorry, the Seattle Foundation has created an East King County fund specifically for the Snoke Valley, where they're looking to identify the needs in our community. So Mayor Larson and I participated in that call and provided them with a significant amount of background on our nonprofits here locally, what services they're providing, and what we are seeing as needs in our community as COVID continues on. Other thing that, meeting that happened was the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board. We're still moving forward on Vision 2050, hopefully for final approval. I believe it's in September, which is much later than normal due to the extenuating circumstances. Also, just, you know, in general, we're continuing to work internally on the budget. So that is a pretty brief update, because my report, administration report is quite long. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and move on to our administration update. And I have to say, when I was going through, this is definitely not completely inclusive. I don't know that I could be completely inclusive without taking up a two-hour timeframe, to be honest. So I'll go ahead and share my screen here. And so this update will encompass things that are specific to my role, as well as things that are specific to our administrative team as a whole. There is crossover, but due to the role, it means that, that there is involvement from the mayor in virtually everything, as well as at different levels, the department directors as part of the administrative team. So first up, just kind of an overview of our, you know, general, everyday-to-day type of work plan. We handle day-to-day operations, community events, management oversight, community engagement and outreach, local business engagement, regional engagement, statewide engagement, general policy development, operations and operational challenges, open government transparency, budget, revenue, and expenditures, weather emergencies, our unexpected crises, including RSD teen suicide crisis and COVID-19. And there's an impact to all of this. So these are the, the subject titles of the slides that I will be going through. So as far as day-to-day operations, we manage directors and oversee work plans, review our contracts, protect the health and safety of not just our employees, but our community. We provide expenditure oversight over what our employees and departments are expending as it relates to the budget. We implement and provide oversight of our approved capital plans. For example, the 275th project, which is coming forward. Provide, implement, and oversight of comprehensive plan and development regulations. Oversee capital facilities, our future space needs, and resident communications, just to name a few. And those are the, some of the daily activities. In community events, obviously, we have the Cultural Commission. They're less active due to COVID this year, and Summer Stage, which unfortunately was canceled. Earth Day had to be canceled, as did Night Out Against Crime, although the police department is hoping to host it in October if all goes well. We also saw this year the cancellation of all of our nonprofit third-party events, like Duval Days, Sand Blast, and Art in Bloom, which is definitely a big hit to our community. And despite those, those events going away, there's still significant staff time that needs to be put into the process. Under management oversight, obviously, manage directors and oversee work plans. We handle human resources. Directors do an excellent job of handling their employees. At times, it does rise to the level of mayor decision-making and recommendations. So it's definitely a key component of our day-to-day operations. I also do annual performance reviews of our directors while they do their, the performance reviews of all of their downline staff. We also work together on our work plan development, make sure that we're, we're adhering to our mission, vision, and values, and long-term goals, the document that we created, I think, just about two years ago as a citywide operational plan. On community relations, one of the areas that's been kind of an area of focus that we hadn't been able to get to as far as making changes and tracking is our, primarily our constituent relations. And in, this is the way it is in most cities, but it's very segmented. It had been very segmented as far as where constituent concerns went, who they went to. Historically, by the nature of being a small city, someone could go to somebody in a building and maybe get a different answer than they might get from somebody in Public Works, where there's flexibility, and part of our goal is to provide consistency, as well as making sure appropriate follow-up is occurring. So over the last couple of months during COVID, during this pandemic, I've actually created, developed a program in which we are tracking all of our constituent information. Staff has not yet been trained on it, but I've been using it extensively and seeing some definitely good results as far as being able to track the issues that are important to folks and what's going on in the community. On community engagement, primarily communications here. Obviously, we do the monthly Mayor's Newsletter. That's just a given, every single month. I provide as many social media updates as possible, including sharing surveys, such as the broadband survey, event notices, you know, events with our elected officials and what have you. City social media updates are completed by Public Works and the Police Department, as we all know. And a lot of the planning and clerks' messages are actually put out by those folks, as those are the two that control our city Facebook page. In general, there's been a major uptick in correspondence from constituents, which is, you know, I see that as actually a good thing, that folks are reaching out and feeling that they can ask questions or make a complaint. And because, to me, that's the best way that we can really identify what's going right and what's wrong in our community and how we're, how we're interacting with folks. Much of that obviously has to do with things like COVID, our snowstorms, our floods, and oftentimes issues that we don't have any control over, but we're doing our best to provide as much detailed information to folks as possible so they understand the situation, even if we can't give them the answer that they want to hear. And community relations, again, I mentioned the constituent log already. And then the community events, we've had a lot of cancellations this year. But despite cancellations, there was still a significant amount of work that went into that. In the future, we had planned to be doing Budget Town Halls. Obviously, current events has made that not possible this year, the level that we wanted to. I'm hoping to have the budget survey finalized and out within the next week. And when that happens, it'll also go out in the newsletter, which will provide us enough time to make, if there's any major changes in priorities, we can make some budget, budget adjustments before the budget's finalized at that point. In the future, you know, we're looking at doing virtual town halls. I think that there has been a lot of success in many areas for those types of events, and in some cases, increased participation, which I think is really great for our community and provides an additional tool. And I think as Councilmember McHenry knows, the, the virtual chats have actually, with the council chats have actually gone pretty well. So it provides a new and easier way to do business, but it also might allow us to reach a larger part of the community. Another part of our work plan and day-to-day operations is really local business engagement. So that means attending Chamber of Commerce meetings. We've held a long series of recurring meetings with the Chamber of Membership regarding COVID-19 and the business impacts. We worked to develop the CARES Act Small Business Grant Program, and I do check-ins with business owners as frequently as possible to see how they're doing and see what they're... to see how they're doing and see what their needs are within the community. Another key component of our operations is certainly regional engagement. We have the monthly Snoqualmie Valley Mayor's Meetings, monthly North End Mayor's Meetings that are organized by the Sound Cities Association. For my regional engagement side, monthly Sound Cities Association Board and Executive Committee, Sound Cities Legislative Committee, Sound Cities Events Committee, Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board. On this, we're working a lot on, we've been working on grant allocation and of course Vision 2050, which includes the transportation plan that SVTC was talking about earlier this evening. As far as sound cities, we are continuing to address the emerging issues in the region. And I have to say that the conversations that we have with mayors throughout the county are invaluable as far as helping manage the unprecedented situation that we're in right now. Also, there's frequent, a lot of effort that goes into maintaining engagement with our congressional delegation, our county and legislative groups, which includes this year, as you all know, a significant amount of correspondence. That we've, we've either separately or together when time allowed, provided to our delegations to try and move programs specifically related to COVID forward. And this is outside of our, our normal legislative processes. So statewide and federal, we do have monthly meetings with either Del Benny or her staff, Congresswoman Del Benny or her staff. Have frequent discussions with Representative Springer Goodman and Senator Deanbrough. I do my best to attend as many of the Association of Washington Cities Mayor's Exchanges and statewide conferences as possible. There are always key learnings and new innovative ideas that come forth. And just being part of those events really do help raise the city's profile. And help people around the state understand the issues that we're facing. The next up is National League of Cities. While the city is not a member, I continue to attend those conferences. And have been fortunate enough to be invited to, to events that are technically members only. And of note, back in March, when I attended the last conference there, that was the actual last business conference to be held in Washington DC before the shutdown. So it was pretty profound to realize that and see that not only were we there when it was ongoing, that they brought in the experts and changed the entire trajectory of the conference to address what was going on at that point. We're also participating in Mike Bloomberg's mayor's work group through his foundation. It's specific to the pandemic. There was weekly meetings, now we are back to monthly meetings. Discussing with mayors literally from across the world, the issues that we're facing and finding out what other jurisdictions are doing to meet their communities' needs. And they're becoming kind of a repository for a lot of that information and support. Mentioned National League of Cities topic-specific workshops. There's been several of those to attend that I believe our staff has attended some of those as well. And they provided a significant amount of good information for us. Also, part of our work plan, we have to keep in touch with the Governor's Office. And so the Governor's Office has been, when possible, really great about making sure that the mayors of the city of the state are engaged with what's going on and trying to keep us as informed as possible. I think we all know though, that the situation changes rapidly and sometimes that's difficult. And of course, there's a lot more, but those are the main things that we've been doing this year. For general policy development, in progress and or complete, everyone's aware of the personnel manual. That is on pause. It's due to workload capacity and the fact that we have just brought a new city attorney on board. I expect that to take a few more months because it may be like started from scratch at this point. We were also working on a movie policy. This was actually led by a lieutenant in the Police Department that would provide compensation to the city when movie studios want to come and film in our town and also provide the risk management policies that are necessary to be associated with that. That's on pause due to COVID and the Police Department workload at this point. We've also been working on, as you know, updating the meals and travel policy, which is at council for approval. The Ogden Murphy Wallace Negotiation, which is now complete. Working on fast-tracking the CARES Act Small Business and Human Services Grant Program, which is complete. Our procurement policy is in progress. And of course, council just passed the paid family medical leave policy last, at the last special council meeting. Continued under general policy development in progress or complete, solid waste RFP is in progress. Our floodplain regulations are in progress. Comprehensive plan yearly update is ongoing, as is the water comprehensive plan update and the sewer capital plan update. We are set to begin union contract negotiations this August. And then things that are stalled due to change in legal representation or capacity is our wireless facility policy update, which is the 5G policy. That stalled due to, due to the change in legal firms. That said, our options are limited on that, so we should be able to, to work off the model policies and update based on even the most recent regulations that have come out in the last few weeks. The wave camp cable franchise also stalled due to the attorney change. And for reminder to council and to the public, we have no legal authority to negotiate over our broadband under the cable side of things and that the federal government has now completely separated the two, but yet also taken away some of our city's rights as far as being able to negotiate benefits from that cable franchise. And as we see people continue to switch from cable to internet TV and 5G service takes off, that will continue to be a diminishing revenue source and not as nearly as important of an issue long term. The other, another one is our sign code update for temporary sign compliance. That's stalled due to workload capacity and attorney changes and funding. And we have multiple things that are on hold due to workload or council request or action. So our 1406 Funding Distribution Agreement, we are, the council voted to approve receiving part of our sales tax back to put towards affordable housing, which can include utility and rental assistance. We would like to sign with one of our local nonprofits to distribute that funding. It's only a few thousand a year. But we're stalled at this moment because of workload. And part of the reason this is on the back burner at the moment is due to our CARES Act funding, human services funding and the fact this is only a few thousand dollars a year. So it's a significant time investment to get that going. We're also continuing to evaluate and look at the city administrator job description update. Council had us stop work on most of that a little over a year ago. But as we move into this budget process, we'll be restarting that work again. As we all know, during this process, we found some inconsistencies with the way resolutions have been passed and our emergency management plan was put together as far as assigning our Director of Emergency Management and our Sister Director of Emergency Management. These are things that are required of us to have. They don't have to have a different salary or what have you, but as we continue to see in the last three years, a significant increase in the need for more dedication of time to emergency management. It's time to develop a formal job description for both and identify the duties and what that salary range will be and work out how we, how we address that in the future. We're not quite at the point of needing a full-time Director of Emergency Management, but I got to tell you, if we have anything else happen, we will be there. The other part, policy development that's on hold was the Community Development Director Job Description Update. Back when the last biennial budget was approved, the planning director, council approved the planning director title to change to Community Development Director, but there wasn't support for moving forward at the time that we brought forth some potential changes. And now that that has been nearly two years, we really have a responsibility to our director to make sure that that is updated with the current roles and responsibilities, which includes a significant amount of code updating as well. As we've discussed, on the communication side, we're needing more and more work on communications. So we have a, on our plan to actually develop the PIO and a Communications Director Job Description so that we can make sure that, A, if we have our part-time folks doing it part-time, that they're making sure that we're separating that appropriately as well as preparing for the time where we actually hire Communications Director full-time. I would say that we are past that point. However, budget-wise, it's, it's very difficult to bring that onboard full-time. Another policy that we do need to get updated and back in place is a civil emergency policy as part of our emergency management plan. That did expire after the protests died down due to a council policy. The council wanted an expiration date on that. It is not coming forward yet at this point, again, because of workload. We also need to do an update to our emergency management plan, which coincides with some of those civil emergency policies. The job descriptions for Director of Emergency Management and what have you. Folks may remember at the beginning of the pandemic that we talked about our emergency management plan when we created the pandemic policy and how our plan was created to be general hazard. General hazard is fire, flood, snow, wind, earthquake. A lot of the things that we have been seeing are not in general hazard plans. And I think are very unexpected for smaller jurisdictions to have to address. So we will, when we have the workload capability, we will be updating that and making sure that we're covering our bases basis for the future that we're looking at. Another item that has been on my list for two years is a fund balance policy. This is on hold due to workload. And this is primarily, the purpose of this is to look at what we should be keeping in fund balance is a portion of extra budget outside of what's budgeted and how we allocate that. As we all learned when our new finance director came on board, there are some ways that the fund balance was being allocated that I, I personally don't like. And I know that council doesn't like it as either. And so trying to get some parameters around that and get that completed will be huge. We'd originally planned to have this done by budget. However, finances, workload and understaffing may not make that possible for the budgets done. That said, we're developing the budget with future policies in mind. Same goes for the reserve policy update. We have strong reserves, but we do have reserve policies that need to be updated to make sure that we're capturing the revenue necessary to handle the big events when those do happen. Other, one more item on, on general policy development. We've, as folks are well aware, we've been updating internal HR policies. And one of the things that is on our, our critical to-do list, but on hold due to workload is updating to our inclusion policies, including employee recruitment. We made significant updates to, to our discrimination policies and what have you. But there's more work to be done and SOPs to be developed to make sure that we are reaching out to the broadest group of potential candidates to work at the city as possible, as well as trying to make sure that our employees represent and look like the city that they work in. Operations and operational challenges. We're in the middle of the co-interim city administrator transition. As folks know, the Chief Hurt is no longer doing that position by choice and same with Ms. Thomas. Although Ms. Thomas is doing deputy city administrator role a few hours a week. And I'm sure some council members have found out already that that five hours goes, goes by really, really fast. We are also in the midst of a police department transition. And all council members have meetings, I believe, scheduled with the police chief over the next week, week and a half to discuss what's being planned between the police chief and his two lieutenants for that transition process. Another challenge that we have right now is definitely hiring during a pandemic and remote training. It's difficult, if it wasn't difficult enough before, to get qualified employees to apply. But now it's even harder to bring in a new employee and train them while most of your work is remote. Another challenge that we have is definitely, we hear it from employees regularly, is a lack of human resources FTE. And as folks are well aware, that is one of the things I'm seriously considering and the rewriting of the job description for the city administrator. Because that is where a lot of our risk is, risk management. But it's also where there's opportunity for employee support that's really dedicated to those employees. And I think that's really important for the culture of our city as well as moving us into the future and making sure that our HR policies stay up to date. Another challenge that we do have is that our PIOs are carrying more than full workloads in addition to their public information work. So we do have to worry about burnout in that sense. Even just this week with a couple of constituent contacts, it was clear that we just don't have capacity to do all of the communication that we want and need to do. So that means that we need to make some operational changes that may be reflected in the upcoming budget. Our staffing levels are definitely creating significant operational challenges. We have working directors that don't just direct teams, but they're also doing on-the-ground work. We have the challenges put forth to us by the pandemic. And the new legislative procedures are requiring additional time and work for our staff to move some things forward. An additional challenge, as you're all well aware of, in this work plan is our pace of development. And frankly, our inability to keep up with the day-to-day operations in the department as a result of years of understaffing. And we, at this point, I'm not sure that we will be able to catch up. And then we also have the increased workload due to COVID. For many folks, things calm down. For us, it has increased the pace and added additional layers of critical work that has to get done in timely manners, which makes our, doing the day-to-day operations even more difficult. So we are working on the staff workload and salary analysis. That's in progress. We'll have an update to council soon on that. Another challenge we have is that we have budgeted unfilled staff positions, which is stretching our already stretched thin staff even further, especially during a pandemic. The, I, it's in here twice, I didn't mean that, but the new legislative rules is definitely increasing staff time and the amount of time necessary to fill budgeted approved vacant positions. Let's see, okay, I had a couple of duplicates in there, I apologize. Volume development is definitely a huge indicator that we've talked about a lot. We have projects under construction, under review, and the building permit volume is extraordinary. And again, you know, we continue to have the increased workload due to COVID. I think one of the biggest challenges that we're facing as a city right now is that while the city grows and we're in the middle of pandemic and the busiest building cycle that we've seen as a city, we still have thirteen and a half fewer FTEs than the city had in 2008. In 2008, we had fifty-five employees. In 2020, we have forty-two point five and not all those positions are filled. In 2008, our population was under sixty-one hundred. We're now at over eighty-one hundred. So we had a twenty-three percent, we still have twenty-three percent fewer staff than we had in 2008. And a twenty-four percent population increase. That creates some definite operational challenges in being effective at doing work. And it also creates the opportunity for costly mistakes to happen due to that, that pressure of not having enough people onboard. On open government and transparency, we continue to, as part of our long-term work plan, sharing more information regarding city operations. We've adjusted to COVID-19 with Zoom meetings, which I personally feel has helped increase the transparency of how our city operates with the ability for folks to look at a live stream and watch our meetings in real time. We've had some issues, as all are aware, with our financial software inefficiencies. Not only is it time consumptive, we can't pull the reports that we need. Those have to be created, which means that we can't share the information that we would like to share with the general public, either in a timely manner or at all. Next up, one of the other challenges we have with the, the open government transparency is our lack of software for building and planning. A spreadsheet no longer does it and we need to be able to put that information online for the community to see as well as for folks in the application process to be able to see where they're at. And in that light, one of the things that we have been doing is an extensive review of an ERP cloud-based software, which includes public financial transparency. This tacks on to the piggyback RFP that we purchased, put our name on for the city of Snoqualmie. RFP that we purchased, put our name on for the city of Snoqualmie. The software companies that came back for that were less than impressive. And super expensive, so we are currently in doing an extensive review of completely cloud based software that frankly can provide everything that we've been looking for at the city. And we'll bring that forward if and when it appears that that's the right solution. We will be forced in this position to move forward, whether we like it or not. We are not convinced from what we've heard in the industry that our current ERP software is not likely to be around much longer. And if it is, it's going to continue to be subpar. And we are in an environment that that's just not okay with our goals of the city and our community. Our website update and refresh is on hold due to staffing capacity. I think you're all aware that our city clerk works night and day to get everything done. And certainly with the workload that's come through the council the last couple of years, there's not been the time to to dedicate for her to start that process and fully develop the committee and have the staff time appropriate to make that happen. So we're hoping to get to that point within the next year. But it's all an issue of capacity. The other thing that we have is a lack of internal capacity to keep the website current. So I have to say I'm very thankful for those that have reached out when they see things that are updated. As staffing has shrunk, particularly in the planning department, some of those things end up slower to be updated. And it's important to all of us that they get updated quickly. However, sometimes that's just not possible. One of the things that I'm really pleased about is that we now have all of our monthly financial reports posted online. So as soon as Dana gets those done, we are getting them online and accessible for the public. Which I think is exciting because it'll provide people with an easy to go to, quick view of what, where the city's at. In the future, what we want to see in the next two years is all of our financial information accessible online in real time. And again, as mentioned in another area, community surveys and town halls. Continuing, open government transparency, challenges for transparency certainly have a significant amount to do with staffing levels. Transparency can't help, can't happen without the people to provide that information. As I mentioned before, the financial software inefficiencies. Our general workload as a city team overall. Many mandates with legal timelines limit capacity, emergencies happen, projects have to be put on hold, et cetera. Another challenge that we do have with our website besides the need for an update and keeping it updated regularly is storage capacity. And that is something that will cost a significant amount of money to be able to upload records onto the website and keep them there for good. Unfortunately, it's quite expensive with the company we're with, and we'll be working on that to see what we can do to make changes to that. Of course, a big part of our work and probably some of our most important work, which is also council's most important work, is our budget, and we continue to work on that. Ms. Mason's made some significant progress in preliminary revenue forecast for the upcoming biennium. In general, I think council's aware with the reports you've received today that revenue continues to outpace the 2019, 2020 forecast. Our expenditures continue to be below the approved budget and our fund balances are increasing. The big challenge that we have coming forth, of course, is forecasting for COVID nineteen impacts. We are in a unique situation in that our revenue has continued, after a dip, we're continuing to increase and still being ahead of where we had planned for the biennium. Which is not the norm. And we're going to have to keep a close eye to see what happens with businesses reopening and what have you to see if we will be preparing for a bigger dip in some of our general revenues later on. Of course, this year we had multiple weather emergencies, whether or not they rose to the level of state of emergency. It still takes staff at all levels to manage these events. We had multiple floods. Mr. Tozer could tell you just how many, and multiple snowstorms that impacted our staff, either getting to work or taking them away from other projects to manage what was going on. Thankfully, it wasn't snowpocalypse, but it was still significant. So some of the unexpected things that have shifted us to different spaces on our work plans this year. One of which is the Riverview School District teen suicide crisis. The superintendent quickly created the Community Wellness Task Force, which we've been a significant participant on. The city has had funded community sessions for mental health and helping people cope. And we've had a significant amount of coordination with the Snoqualmie Valley Community Network as a result. The other unexpected that we've been dealing with that has definitely changed our work plan and added a lot to it. And I think that with the help of council, we've been very successful is COVID nineteen. Obviously, we had to declare a state of emergency, I believe, in early March. Had to quickly develop a pandemic policy, continuity of operations. And taking a lot of, making a lot of changes to address employee health and safety, whether it's in support, supplies, operations or retrofits. It all is a big lift when you put all of those little things together. Of course, trying to cater our community and keep them healthy is important in the area of public health. We were able to get human services funding grants out early in the pandemic, thanks to the approval of the city council in reallocating some funding. And then, of course, we now have the CARES Act business and human services funding, as well as CARES Act funding to help us cover the cost of the impact of the pandemic on our city government. COVID nineteen related meetings and briefings between me, our emergency manager director and others for the first three months of the pandemic. Actually, four months of the pandemic. It was, I would say, all consuming and provided little time in the day to do other things. That said, the meetings were important and I think helped us really position ourselves well for a small city facing such an enormous challenge. From the pandemic, we do have long term challenges, which will be economic, social and physical for not just our community, but our staff as well. So overall, how does this impact administration? It has been a huge impact. I know that folks are feeling very burnt out, feeling like it's difficult to get day to day work done, which there's no doubt it is. So our impact from all of these changes, it was a big enough work plan to begin with, and now we're, we're at the overload point. So our staff is overloaded. Which ends up with many delayed project and policy timelines. You know, I'm a full time mayor who's not just balancing staff needs, but the community council, county, regional and state and federal obligations. Our traditional staff work, I'm helping out with that as much as possible, which is providing the city significant cost savings. And this is primarily because the current salary for our city's mayor is less than the Washington State minimum wage. And doesn't include the benefits traditionally provided for full time work. So right now, that's a significant savings to our taxpayers. It also results in less time available for community priorities. For example, not just this year, but previous years, trying to get the parks, trails and open space updates completed. Completing our capital planning and moving forward capital projects. Also, we have delayed personnel and city policy development and revision, which is a risk management issue that we continue to try and get ahead of. We also have increased lead times for routine work and continued delays in the capital facilities planning and the completion of our deferred maintenance, which we started budgeting for in the previous biennium. So kind of final thoughts, you know, and I know this isn't all rosy, but it's the reality of the work that we're doing today. And our system is certainly continues to be at a risk of a major breakdown. It's necessary, moving forward for the city to attain a right size of staffing for at least minimum operations. As we know, succession planning is critical for our continuity of operations, which this pandemic has really highlighted. And also highlighted the need to provide deeper benches within our departments and have more cross training, which we have been talking about for a while. However, we're now mission critical for that. We continue to need to update our policies and programs that increase efficiencies. Staff has found pretty much everything they can within their physical power. Now it's time to change policies and implement software or programs that help people get their work done quicker and easier, as well as provide that information to the public so they're not constantly asking, answering questions. Our current pace is definitely not sustainable without additional staffing. But despite the challenges, I have to say that our staff has done an incredible amount of work for a team of their size, especially with the challenges we faced. And I know it hasn't come at no cost to them personally or professionally. And folks are having a difficult time taking time off when needed. But they have been here and committed to the community and doing everything they can to keep our normal business going as we've dealt with all of these unexpected issues this year. So with that, I know it's a lot and it's not everything, but when you ask for an administration update, we're going to dig into it at a real level. So with that, I'll be happy to entertain any questions. And let me resize my my thing here and stop sharing my screen so that I can see you all. Hold on just a moment. My Zoom button is not working. Okay, there we go. We're back. Council member Lengel.
Well, I think the simple thing to say is there's a lot to digest here, and I need to study the slides. And I'm sure there's more conversation in the future.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Council member, Mayor Portem Remington.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I think it's very helpful, pretty thorough. You've identified a lot of needs and challenges. Many of those are obviously addressed in the budget process. I know you're working on, you know, what are the priorities in terms of requests for additional personnel? FTEs, support in different ways. Not just in personnel, but certainly in technology advances, things that we can work on. So we look forward to working with you on that during the upcoming budget process. I think it's helpful for our personnel to hear that we're talking openly about the challenges they face every day when they come to work. And it's incumbent on all of us, both the mayor, council and staff to work together to try to say what can we afford, what can, what are our top priorities here? And work together to come up with some solutions. So thank you for that.
My pleasure. Anyone else? Council member Hope.
So I don't know how detailed you want comments on tonight, but I just hope that as we move forward with things such as a new software program, that you take into account that council, I think during this process, you should bring council along with your decision.
That's absolutely intent, and that's absolutely the intent. We're not to the point of having enough information to bring it to council yet. But we're
Forwarded with only one company and you don't give us voices, that's not going to be.
So as, as we've talked about in the Finance and Administration Committee, we will be bringing forth the information received from Snoqualmie as well, because Finance Director Mason and I participated in those interviews with those companies and the review of that software as well. So we will have, I think, a significant amount of information to discuss with the council as a whole.
One company, one company?
No, the city of Snoqualmie had Ms. Mason. It was two or three. RFPs come in, is that correct?
They did have three, but one was Springbrook, the existing
Yep.
Software.
So what we are doing, at the process we're doing right now, is looking at, we've got the information on the other two. We're looking at this other one. And we'll bring forth a recommendation that also shows, you know, estimates of what the other software costs and what they provide and don't provide as well. The bottom, you know, the most important thing to me here is that staff has what they need to carry out the functions of the city efficiently, effectively, and get the reports we need. And also be able to provide additional transparency for the community as a whole. Costs is
But the cost is so, is very important to council, and I don't think that you can disregard council when you're making
Council member Hope, I said nothing about disregarding costs. No matter what we do, systems are going to cost money and we all have to evaluate that. That said, if a program is fifty thousand dollars less than another, and it's not going to provide what staff needs, then it's a waste of our money. Because we would be wasting money and time not having what they need. I think the staff evaluation of the software is the most important and critical part, so that we don't end up in another situation with a software like Springbrook that just doesn't work. So it is a huge, long evaluation process. We've been looking and talking about this for over a year at this point. But we need to continue the, get to the point and bring it forward, as we've discussed previously, and we will, in fact, have significant council involvement, because it is a significant financial investment, even when it saves money over the long run. Council member Lengel.
What I recall is last fall, we started talking about a specific program that you were interested in, which was Open Gov.
Right.
Open Government. And there was a big change in open government
Correct.
After that, which has to do with acquiring an accounting software package. So the information that was provided a year or so ago has changed significantly.
Correct.
I think, so that's just one point. The, the second point is that an ongoing concern has always been around open gov specifically is administrative costs. In particular, because from what I can do from my, some eyes from my research, what Open Gov did was they bought another software company and they adapted it. So we're going to have to not just understand the value of Open Gov from a year ago, we're also going to need to understand how that's relevant with the acquisition of this new program. So I'm, I'm not, you know, what I'm trying to say here is there is, this is a complicated purchase.
Yep.
And we need to be very careful. I'm also going to add to the mix what Director, our Director of Public Works mentioned, which is there's other software that he's interested in, which could help us retain existing staff as we transition to a larger community. We all know that larger community is in the future. So all I'm saying on software is, there's many pieces to it. And it is going to take very careful deliberation and a lot more fact finding. And that isn't to say that, you know, one track versus other tracks is not good or bad. We just don't have all the information now, and so
We don't either yet.
Yeah, and you're acknowledging that, so
That's what, that's why we're doing our due diligence, because
Right. So when that due diligence is done in collaboration with finance and administration, I think it can be quite helpful. We certainly are seeing the challenges around needs for reports. My personal sort of mind blowing moment of realizing that personnel costs could not be, a report can be generated the same as, you know, something like, you know, ADP, which I think has another name now. So lots of research there, and I appreciate you opening the door to do that research, because it's complicated.
It is, it is.
Complicated.
It certainly is, and I think, you know, definitely Ms. Mason has experience with multiple platforms as well. Mr. Lenishewski's been very involved in this early process. So, you know, this is definitely one of those areas where we don't want to be in this position, but we don't have a choice one way or the other within the next two years. Council member Napland.
Thank you for your detailed presentation. I also would love to get a copy of the slides. And I, I just, I, it went by too fast, but I, I feel like I saw, or you mentioned something about And I, I just, I, it went by too fast, but I, I feel like I saw, or you mentioned something about 2008 being the peak of how many employees we had. And so I didn't quite hear what you said, but I went back and looked at, you know, what the staffing levels were in, in that year. And it looks like we had about 52 staff members. And primarily a difference would be that we had police force that served all of the city of Carnation. So we were staffed significantly higher in police.
Well, Councilmember Napland, do you, Councilmember Napland, how many employees are actually Chief Hurt? Can you tell me the police?
I just want to finish, can I finish? And then you're welcome to, to respond. It's just, it's hard for me to get my thoughts when I'm interrupted. So police was much higher and then there were some utility workers. And I believe we used to have to manually read the meters. And all that aside, I'm trying to figure out like, where have we lost staff and lost capacity? Because I do believe that we have more workload than we can accomplish. And so I am not trying to diminish that we have an issue with more work than we can accomplish. But I'm just trying to understand like, how have things changed over time? And so when I'm looking at that, it looks like, you know,
So
here's the primary difference was, you know, some of those areas I mentioned. And then though, just listening to your presentation, I believe I heard four additional positions that you would like to see filled either soon or in the very near future.
What I'm saying there is those are areas.
Can I finish? And, and so I'm just thinking that's a lot of positions that we could foresee in the next, maybe next budget cycle, the next one after that. Just kind of in our potential positions. And then we also had director presentations, a few counts, maybe it was at the special meeting, I can't remember. And they all had requests for additional FTEs. And so my request is to just, before we see a budget, if we could have an understanding of what the FTE request will be, so we can kind of, I don't know, maybe prioritize or have that conversation. Because I think, you know, if I add up all these kind of wish lists of FTEs, we would be adding, you know, probably six or seven additional positions. And so if we could just have a conversation before we get a budget to kind of understand which ones are you looking at short term? And just to understand that better. Because I just keep hearing in all the different presentations, requests for, we need these positions, we need these. I'm a little bit confused about which ones you really want in the short term and which ones are more long term. Easily with the amount of revenue we have.
So we have not determined what, the order of which we're going to need these things, but the bottom line is we do need them. It is true that we used to have people have to go out and physically look at the utility meters. It's also true, we've taken on additional infrastructure and additional mandates and policies from the state and federal government that require yet additional time that are unfunded and, and continue to increase the workload on day to day staff. Regardless of how you look at it, we haven't had enough staff since before the recession. And that was never a priority of previous administrations. And we have significant public health and safety projects, particularly in the Public Works Department, that we have to find a way to get done. We have positions that were budgeted in the biennial budget that council has not allowed the city to hire, which is putting us further and further behind. That's not a criticism, it is a fact and that's part of what we're working with now. Chief Hurt, can you address the issue on Carnation Police Force? Because if I remember correctly, we actually didn't reduce the police force, is that correct?
So my recollection, and please don't hold me to this, back in '08 would have been, I believe, three dedicated officers to the city of Carnation. And the incarnation was responsible for 50% of the administrative costs. Meaning, you know, portion of the then police chief, a portion of myself and supervision. So three and a half FTEs for the city of Carnation.
Yeah, I had that it was 17.89 were budgeted and now we have 13.8, I believe.
Those, and those positions were, we currently constantly had open positions, is that correct, Chief Hurt?
The correct answer honestly is, when we took over, or we reassumed or left Carnation for a variety of reasons. And, and another, another FTE in that calculation, Councilmember Napland, Mayor Aquander is, at that time, we also had a, we had a records manager and a police clerk. So we, we've lost that one position as well. So that would have been part of that calculation. My understanding, my memory is not like it used to be for sure, but we did assume all officers that were currently on staff with Carnation. But I can't recall if there were vacancies that we lost. I can't give you that answer without going back and looking through the data. But we did have two, two police clerks in that, in that FTE count, Jennifer.
Right. So just to follow up on my question, I just want to reiterate again, I'm not saying that I think that somehow we have plenty of staff and, you know, we should be able to get all this work done. I acknowledge that there is a significant workload and it's going to be challenging. My concern is I don't think we can add back seven or eight positions in one budget cycle. And so
There is no proposal to do such at this time.
Strategically try to figure out where is our greatest need, where are we going to? And that's why I was kind of curious of like, are we different than 2008? Like where have we lost people, which department, like what hole do we need to refill that we've lost? Because of the, you know, when they cut back during the economy.
We, we also need to remember, it's not just loss of employees, it's increase and change in city operations. For example, we have a planning department that is our community development director and planning side, who is managing building and planning with one other employee and just now got approval for the employee when we have the highest number of building permits received for the year. This isn't an aberration, we are prioritizing, this is part of why we are doing the staff workload and salary analysis to, to really identify what we actually need. And then administration will prioritize what's needed to do the work and bring that forth to council. We will not be requesting seven new positions in the budget. This report was simply to give, give a clear overview of our workload, what we've achieved, what we're not able to achieve. And what we need to consider for the future. Ms. Thomas?
So I think what we'll do is we'll, to address Councilmember Napland's question, we can go back and provide some information. But I know at least from the city hall, we lost a person upfront and we lost an economic development director. We lost a planner and we lost a admin in planning as well. So I think we probably are about four off just at city hall. Thank you.
That's what I'm seeing as well.
Councilmember McHenry?
Anything, just to touch on a couple of points. One is the history is really fascinating to me. I, but at the end of the day, I guess I look a little bigger picture and, you know, you're, you guys are going to tell us what is needed now and then we can afford what we can afford. And the true answer of that will be somewhere in between those two points. But I think the history is interesting. I just don't see it as a, necessarily a plausible reason for why we need positions. I think it's important to just note what we need now. And then the other thing Councilmember Hoag brought up, I don't, I don't want to speak for her, I was just trying to kind of interpret the back and forth there. And I mean, I, I think it's always just that gray area of when do you bring people in? Because if you're not brought in at the right time, potentially it can waste resources and time if it comes to a conclusion that is rejected by council. That's kind of just the bigger theme that I was hearing, but I think that's a message we've given before and I know you understand that. And I think we have an understanding of that. So I just think going forward, trying to incorporate people when, at an opportune moment so that we don't go too far down the line of getting too much work done just to have it rejected later. That's what I'm hearing in general.
No, I appreciate that, Councilmember McHenry, and that's exactly the point. And in these types of, this is also one of those areas where really bringing forth the software should really simply be a legislative budget decision and that the technical decision should be made by staff. To be clear, this is, this is one of those issues where we want input, but we need to make sure that we're not investing in something that's not going to work for staff. Because if we would invest in something that's not going to work for staff, we're right back to where we began. If you will recall, a few months earlier, at the beginning of the COVID, I asked a few people to serve, to help review some of the software and chose council members, asked council members to serve that aren't as involved on other committees. And we're getting close to that point where it's time to bring folks in and start that early review and move things forward after that point, depending on whatever direction we decide to go. Then bringing it forth at that point. Councilmember Lengel?
I'll try to make this a list. Number one, presuming that council is okay with it, I sadly, you know, participated in that committee. Point number two, as a point of clarification, what council did when we agreed to the budget amendment was set aside over 300,000 over the 500 and some thousand you requested for additional authority so that you could hire additional people. And all we really asked for was some supporting documentation so we could move that in an expedited process without going back and doing some big budget amendments. So it's simply set aside as a reserve of funds. Additional authority is in that presuming council does a simple vote. No other sophisticated legislative action. And to, to reiterate the issue or the subject of, you know, the need for more staff. I, I, speaking for myself, I, I get it, right? I, I get it that we have deficiencies. Really, the question is, how do we transition into the future? And how do we afford it along the way? So it's, it's, it's less about the debate, I think, of what the gaps might be. It's more a debate between administration and council as how do we get there? And, you know, yes, staff's considerations are considered. I mean, that's one of the beauties of Finance and Administration. And why I like participating is we do have staff dialogues on a regular basis. That said, there's expertise, technical expertise on council. And that's why we have an oversight function. So let's, you know, these are huge change periods and they're going to be rough. And, and we should just sort of accept that. And let's try to work with it.
Yep.
Nobody's going to get all the cookies on the plate. But maybe over time, you know, we can get where we need to be or where, you know, slash where we can afford to be. I mean, we have a tax structure in the state that does not help us at all.
No.
And so I think we always have to remember it. We just don't.
Yep. Thank you, Councilmember Lengel. Great. All right, I'm not seeing any further questions. So if I can get my computer to turn on here. We will move on to the next agenda item. And that is council reports. We didn't have any council members that raised their hand for a report, so we'll move on to council committee reports. Councilmember Hoag?
So we've had two finance and administrative administration committee meetings, our meeting, they had one on July 23rd and one on July 30th. The July 23rd meeting, we spent quite a bit of time talking about the small business and human services grant process. We had a discussion about Dubal Village and update. And we also at that time talked about some of the attorney contract for union negotiations. We did not work on procurement policy at that meeting. July 30th, we got an update from Laura on land use and affordable housing in Little Ridge. We did have quite a discussion about travel and meals policy, accountant and accounting associate. And we also did not get procurement policy done at that meeting. We did change this week's finance meeting to next Thursday, so a week from this Thursday, 9:30 in the morning. So that's a very brief report.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Hoag. All right. And I don't believe any other council committees met. So we'll move on to administration update with Mr. Lenishewski on the Kennedy water main. Oh, Ms. Thomas?
Do you, would you like him to go first?
He's got the bullet, so let's let him get his work done first.
Okay.
Oh, actually, he does have more agenda items. So Ms. Thomas, if you want to go first, that's fine. I'll leave it up to the two of you.
Mr. Tozer is going to handle that one.
Okay. So then let, let Mr. Tozer move on it because he does not have anything else on the agenda, correct?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Mr. Tozer, take it away.
So I'm going to leave my video off just since my wifi seems to be a little bit sketchy, but I'll go ahead and share my screen. I have two quick slides just to kind of help illustrate the point. Can you guys see that screen? Could you see it for a moment? Okay.
I can see it, Mr. Tozer.
Perfect. All right. So, so first thing is just a real quick update on progress. So the jobs have been going really well, good contract, we've worked with them before, we're, we're pretty satisfied with what they're doing. And we're probably somewhere in the range of 80% complete, maybe a little beyond that on the pipe work. We had a tie in today, we have one tomorrow and then again Thursday. Again, it's been just generally good work, good, good ground, all that stuff. We had obviously a service strike and then a main break that were part of this work. So some learning curve moments that caused a little extra difficulties that we didn't need. But again, it's something, part of the job. So also something that we've run into this, which is part of why we wanted to come here tonight and have a quick discussion and check in is we've run into some challenge, which was generally just been incorrect ASBUIL information. So we get disagreeing drawings and record drawings that show where a pipe should be and that's how we designed to. And again, that has ultimately cost us some time and effort and which just means it's cost. So that's the update piece. And then in this, I just wanted to kind of give you guys a quick, I did an estimated cost to complete. That's not necessarily an estimated cost at completion. So a lot of this, I all run up, run out an item at 100%, even if we might be a little bit under. So I believe this to be a conservative estimate, but I could be wrong, it definitely happens. So, but what we wanted to kind of keep you guys aware of is we do intend to execute a change order. It is within the mayor's authority under the DMC 312080. So it's 20% or 20K, whichever is lesser. You can see by the bottom right hand column there, my current number for the estimated cost to complete would be an over of $19,173.35. Again, I believe this to be conservative, but I could be wrong. The reason for a lot of this again is that, that incorrect ASBUIL info, we had to really go, I, I call it sport digging. And really it was just poking holes in the ground, digging for a spot and hoping we find a water main. And that took almost two and a half days of crew time, which were 100% on us. Because again, our ASBUILs just didn't have the correct data. So we spent a bit of time and effort to find what we needed to find so we could accomplish the, the project. So again, not a huge hit in all the grand scheme of things, but something we wanted to keep you aware of. Especially because if I go $20,001 or $20,500, I'm coming back to council for, for approval on that. So just wanted to keep you guys in the loop early and allow an opportunity for any questions if you guys have it. But again, also showing where we're projecting at the moment. That is all I have for discussion items.
Thank you, Mr. Tozer. Are there any questions? Councilmember McHenry?
Just a question out of curiosity, is that issue fairly common or is it more on the rare side?
I'd say this was a little bit more rare. So I mean, it definitely, it definitely happens. We find that all the time. But there was one on the first one near Third Avenue, the pipe was in a completely different spot. So it showed it was like almost 10 feet over. We made a quick adjustment to alignment. We spent a little bit of money on VAC truck, but we were able to adjust to that really quickly. And then further up the hill on Kennedy toward, toward the east end, that was a very different one. Where the record drawing for the ASBUIL on the plat showed it doing this, extending all the way to the property line and then coming around a structure and connecting in, as would make a lot of sense. And then the previous drawing from the plat that developed before that showed something else, which is fine. And it ended up being the pipe met in the middle somewhere. So very unusual, it didn't really belong where, where it was, but, but we ended up finding it eventually.
Oh, that's interesting. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Lengel?
I guess my question is, is what was the approved contract authority by council for this project? And I guess the thing I was wondering about specifically is if this change order is above that contract authority, that it would have to go back to council, I believe. So that is important point of clarification.
So again, looking at this, I'd have to go back in the agenda bill, I don't think we, we don't usually write agendas or contracts with authority over the contract amount, we don't always do that. But again, the DMC speaks to the amending a contract, a particular contract and how to do that. So I'll look at the agenda bill, I mean, you don't want me to pull it up right now, that's for sure, but I'll look into that and see if we did. I would have imagined that you guys authorized probably what we would have asked for, which is the, the contract sum. We might have put a little bit more in there. Steve's shaking his, shaking and nodding, so.
Well, Mr. Lenishewski, did you have anything to add there?
I was trying to pull up the existing agenda bill that authorized the contract. I believe it was, was not inclusive of any additional overs. We've done that on larger projects like Main Street 1 and 2, where you may or may not have.
Right.
Some sort of thing you can't stop for and you come back, you know, after the fact report. The project here.
Yeah, it would have been tied up in the amendment amount, Steve, when we amended the budget. So it'd be a whole project roll-up, and so I'm not sure that we have to dig into that and see if we added something above and beyond. But it wouldn't be particular to this contract, it would have been total project cost, I suppose.
If we can't find the answer now, we'll get it. So moving on, if there are any more additional questions regarding this project, we will let Ms. Thomas provide her update.
So good evening, mayor and council. I am going to share my screen really quick, and this presentation should be pretty quick since we're going a little long this evening. So under our administration update, there's just a handful of items that I wanted to bring to your attention. So we're in the last phases of our city attorney transition. Most of our directors and city clerk have met with our new city attorney. We still have, I believe, one more director that's gonna be meeting with Daniel in this next week, along with our mayor. Just a call out, we have two vacant planning commission positions and zero applications, and one of them has been vacant for about eight weeks. So if you know anybody in the community or anybody that's listing on here, I think we have at least seven random residents. Give us a call, the planning department, and we can walk you through what the planning commission does. So we would be excited to get and recruit two new planning commissioners. So again, council, if you have, you know, any networks to push out the announcement, that would be great. It was in our utility billing. I'll work with our PIO to push it out again through social media. We are continuing to make progress on the salary and compensation study. At the next council meeting, we'll be bringing an item to the COW to look at, at our comparables and what our consultant believes are our comparables for our community moving forward. We're also gonna be bringing forward an affordable housing discussion, and we talked a little bit about this at, at our last FAC meeting. And so under a development agreement from just over a decade ago, and this is for phase one through four of the Toll Brothers project, we have an affordable housing requirement. So we're looking at two different options. One would be to look at arch to manage those units, and the other option would be for the city to manage those units. We're also kicking off contract negotiation. So we'll first be working with the FOP and then the Teamsters. Development construction, as you've probably seen, there's a lot of construction happening this summer. Some projects are in full gear, others are getting towards completion. We have quite a few projects that have gone through the hearing process in the last couple of months, and all of those projects are bringing in their construction drawings. So it's a really busy time again for public works, engineering, and planning. We're also continuing to make great progress on our biennium budget. We've reviewed, all departments have gone through a review process with Dana. We have a brand-new spreadsheet and way of doing our budget, which has been a really easy process this year. So we were really happy, it took, at least in my perspective, less time to go through and look at budget. So right now, what finance is looking at is revenue projections. So that's all I have for my administrative update unless anybody has any questions.
I'm not seeing, oh, Councilmember Lengel.
As I recall, you went ahead and advertised for that position that we authorized. How's that going?
We just started, we just started the recruitment, and so we've pushed it out to the colleges and through the APA and through AWC. ADBC will post it this week, they post once a week. So we'll see, you know, I, I am confident that we're gonna get a really good, strong candidate. The challenge will be right now is going through an interview process that's not in person and then hiring and doing essentially remote training. So, well, it'll be different.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Ms. Thomas? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so we will go ahead and move on.
Mayor, Mr. Remington had a question. He wrote.
Okay, I couldn't see that. Thank you, Mayor Portman. Please go, go for it.
I loved the presentation, thank you, Laura. Really well done. I know that you're busy and all the building and stuff falls in your lap. So thanks for the hard work that all of you are doing. You had mentioned working on the, the contract for the attorney services, and we have Daniel Kenny with us tonight, so I just wanted to be able to say again, congratulations, we're happy you're on board, and it certainly looks like some of our documents already have your name on it for city attorney review, and we, again, look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Excited to be here, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and move on. We do not have any presentations or public hearings this evening, so we'll start with new business, Agenda Bill 20-66, resolution authorizing electronic signature and adopting signatures and adopting policy for discussion. Ms. Wykoff.
Good evening, council and members of the public. My name is Jody Wykoff, city clerk. Tonight before you for first read is the, a resolution to authorize electronic signatures and adopt a related policy. This is a first reading, there's a little bit of work that we want to complete with the attorney's help on the policy itself. But this is something that, that, you know, is a long time coming in general, just, you know, with the technology that's available out there, just wasn't the, I didn't have the capacity to do a lot of the research into it, and then obviously it has been shoved all the way to the top of my priority list because it has taken weeks to get items signed. And it's, it's painful because it, it really slows the process down, and then I, you know, I don't want to lose track of where things are. So we are looking right now at two different platforms. I'm sure you have heard of both of them. One is DocuSign, the other is Adobe Sign through the Adobe Acrobat suite. So I'm looking into them to see what will fit our needs now and what we could potentially use in the future for even more efficiencies, like, you know, automatic form and such. So I don't have a lot else to say. If you guys have any questions, I am more than happy to answer what I can.
Councilmember Hoag.
I'm really happy to see this coming forward. As, as a Realtor, we've been using electronic signatures for quite a few years now, and it, you know, there's, it's, it's definitely a plus. I guess one of the disadvantages is I feel like when you're, sometimes it's so easy just to click your signature, signature without reading what you're, you know, so it's, yeah, you'll have, people that are signing will have to get used to taking their time and reading through the documents because it's a little too easy sometimes. But I'm thrilled that this is coming forward. I think it's, it's perfect timing, it's kind of making us, you know, move forward with this. In looking at the different companies, I guess, have you looked at the cost associated with those?
That is definitely one of the things that will be in consideration. I have not gotten actual quotes yet from either one of them. I'm still kind of just learning about the platforms themselves and, and how they can benefit us and, and I haven't actually even seen the DocuSign one. I've used it, so I'm kind of familiar with it, but I'm looking for something that will allow some workflow control. Like if I needed something to be signed by you, but it had to be signed by, you know, Councilmember Naplin first, then the nice thing is that you can put in controls into that workflow so that you don't get it until she does what she needs to do with it, you know what I mean? And then the other thing is, you were talking about forcing yourself to slow down and read the document instead of just clicking the button. There's other things in one of the platforms I've looked at that, that you can put in controls so that, like, if you need them to answer these questions before they're allowed to sign and send, then you can make those required fields. So those kinds of controls, I mean, we may not need it right now, right now, we just need the ability for me to send something to the mayor or the attorney for signature so that it's not sitting on my desk or their desk or whatever for, you know, weeks at a time. But I would like to know more about those controls so that, or those, those functions so that we can look at this and how it can grow with us to help us be even more efficient.
And, and to be clear, though, things don't sit on your desk for me for weeks at a time.
No, 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 I'm not.
No, I sign things as feasible, as reasonably possibly, possible during pandemic. There have been.
It's really hard.
Huh?
I said, it's just really hard for all of us. I mean, with the attorney stuff before, I was having to literally mail it in the mail and then they would go get, pick it up once a week, then they would re-sign it and return it, and then it would take a lot, you know what I mean?
This is primarily a result of all the remote work due to the pandemic. It's pushing along something that would have moved along later, earlier. Councilmember Hoag.
So the, we use AuthenaSign with our real estate, and I don't know that there's, I have frustrations with it at times, but it does have the ability to either have multiple people sign it whenever they have time or to put it in an order. And I'm not sure, you know, I, there might be better programs out there for Realtors too, so I haven't researched that. But I do have a question for Mr. Kenny. Are there documents that we cannot sign electronically? In real estate, there are documents that you cannot sign that way.
Yeah, that, okay, yeah, you guys can hear me, correct? Okay. Yeah, there'll, there'll be documents that have to be original signatures. You know, I, I've got clients that do it in so many different ways that it, you know, there's, there's many ways to get around this. This is definitely the, the best way to do it and the quickest way to do it. I hope not to be weeks on my end, in the meantime, for, for signature, but yeah, there's, there's definitely some that we're gonna have to have some original signatures on.
And, and council can, you know, as part of the policy process, you know, I have, in the policy, it actually says, these are the types of documents that can be signed electronically. So if council has a preference about a certain type of document, then we can write that into the policy. When I was doing the research, I was looking at MRSC for some sample policies and stuff, and there says that virtually, there's hardly anything that is, that where it's illegal to sign electronically. Although I do know that there's some federal grants that we've done in the past where they require a wet signature and stuff, so, and probably like the MyLars, when we do a final plat, probably have to be wet signature. So there's definitely going to be some, but we're trying to kind of knock out the majority of the, of the average document that we sign.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Well, I just comment, I'm excited about this. In my career, I used, we use DocuSign, I don't use the name because I think that's what we ought to go to, but that was my experience. And Jody, you just nailed the key things. You know, one is the efficiency, especially since we have all these remote locations. It's in electronically, so it doesn't matter if you're working remotely at home or if you're at Public Works trying to get it to City Hall, it's just instantaneous on your email. And yes, you can put safeguards in there, so if you don't correctly fill out the boxes, it doesn't go forward. So it's just a little bit of a help for an employee to make sure those are covered. You know, you might leave work and go, oh, I needed to get that form, but, you know, you can grab it there on, on, on your email. So anyway, I'm excited about this. I think it's gonna be huge savings in terms of paperwork, in terms of efficiency and time, and it's well worth it cost-wise.
I think Mr. Hurt had a comment.
You had your hand up?
I did, thank you. I just wanted to comment, and I apologize, Jody, if you said it and I missed it, but one of the greatest efficiencies outside of contracts and things that council needs to sign is, as we continue to telecommute as directors, there are, there are documents that we must review, especially in Laura's position right now, where she's reviewing, you know, the financial invoices every month, and, and she's at home, she can use the same tool at home, it just, it does create a lot of efficiencies, but that is a key part of this. And we talked about that in our, in our director meeting a week or two ago, how can we, how can we streamline this? So as we were discussing it, as I recall, that was another key component, I think you need to hear that, so, thank you.
That's definitely one of the big things that we talked about is how we can streamline that process.
Ms. McHenry.
Just a quick comment as well, that this is really exciting, and, you know, it's funny how you try and look for the positives to come out of a pandemic, this may not have been a priority before, but it's coming forward now, it makes sense to streamline, but it could be really useful in the future to, in a step towards being more prepared, no matter what comes our way.
Thank you, Councilmember McHenry. Any other feedback for Ms. Wykoff? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Bill 20-67, a resolution for travel and meals policy. This is for discussion. Ms. Mason.
Good evening, council and mayor. Let's see here, let me get my, can you see my slides, okay? Travelment policy, okay. So let's see, this is airplane days, days foregone, hopefully we'll be able to ride on these someday soon. But, so the policy, why, why change? Staff looks to two places for guidance on city-related meals and travel, DMC 4.10.080, which was adopted in 1997, and Resolution 1107, which was adopted, adopted in 2011. So the, the code mostly addresses vehicle use and just briefly authorizes reimbursement of authorized travel costs, accommodation and meals, and necessary incurred while, that are necessary and incurred while on city business. Resolution 11-07 applies mainly to non-travel meals and expenses, and neither policy addresses how much can be spent on meals and travel. So there's, there's just a lot of gray areas between the resolution and the, the code. So as best practices suggests, the new policy encourages economic travel. It uses per diem rates for lodging and meals when, when traveling. It addresses non-travel meals separately using per diem as a guidance. Right now, it's just what's ever reasonable and necessary, and that can be interpreted in many different ways. It requires pre-approval for travel, requires approval to the exception for the, any exceptions to the policy. And then it requires the timely submission of receipts for non-per diem expenditures and requires event agendas with travel claims and then also requires approval by a direct supervisor. And other notable changes to the policy, it allows employees in travel status to either use a P-card for me, for a meal up to their per diem rate and, and then they can bring a, back an itemized receipt or they can receive the per diem rate per meal and there's no receipt necessary. And when we get back to traveling, this is something that's really time-consuming. People miss their receipts or they might go over a little bit over and then they have to reimburse the city or it's just a lot of time involved in reviews, reviewing travel receipts. And then also it allows employees to receive per diem for meals in advance. And it uses per diem as a guideline for non-travel meals rather than reasonable and necessary costs, as I mentioned before. And then it also addresses mileage reimbursement for employees to receive car allowance. It adds a definition section for clarification and it addresses non-staff member travel and no-shows. So if you want to have someone come along on the trip for you or if you want to extend your trip, and then what happens if you make a lot of charges on the city's card or you, you you book a lot of travel and then you don't have a reason, good reason for not going. If you had a good reason for going, you, the city wouldn't ask you to, you know, for not going. The city would not ask for reimbursement of those expenditures, but if there's not a good reason, then we would ask for reimbursement. So for, for both of these, what we would need to repeal and replace Resolution 1107 and then we would need to amend DMC 4.10.080. So are there any questions? Let me try to make my screen big again so I can see. Sorry, I can't, I'm trying to.
Any hand at this point, Dana?
Oh, I think Councilmember.
Member Hoag?
I just wanted to thank you so much for all the time that you spend on this policy with us and you're really good at working through thoughts with us and making, you know, suggested changes and I just appreciated all your time. You're good at quality.
Councilmember McHenry and then Councilmember Lingle?
I had sent you a question and you responded and I finally got a chance to read through it and it was really great. So I just wanted to say it again so that others could hear. I had asked specifically in the past, we've done town hall meetings or open houses and we buy some light refreshments and I had asked, because it seemed like the wording of the current policy was just more toward, I can't remember the exact wording, but that basically, oh, that the light refreshments for public meetings were if we were recognizing an employee. And so you had responded, but I don't know if you just want to, you know, say what you had said in your email for, so everyone could hear it.
Oh, I'll have to, let me pull up the email.
You want me to read it?
Oh, sure. That'd be great. Thank you.
So, yeah, you had said that the new policy addresses the gray areas and provides guidance on the amount that can be spent on meals. Let me scoot down to the last part. Basically, so the new policy doesn't say we can't buy refreshments for town halls or open houses, but it also doesn't say we can't. But if we wanted to add some words to that to be specific, since I think you said technically every council meeting could be considered an information giving event or something like that. So to word it specifically, if we wanted to make sure that at town halls and open houses for the public, we could buy light refreshments to just maybe add a very specific sentence. I think that kind of sums up. You had a really nice, super complete response, but you know, I think that summarizes it.
Yeah. Councilmember Lingle?
Yeah, I think this is an example of another really great collaboration at FNA, so I'm thankful. I think that, you know, when I looked at the ordinance itself, I could see a couple little places for tweaking and I'll just, we can, you know, pass those along to you. But we're, you know, these are not, they may be substantive, but they're not big. They're literally word here, word there. So but I, I do think we have to be, we should consider how we title this code section. So it's clear that it's, yes, it's travels and travel and meals, but it's more as to Councilmember McHenry's point, it's more than just meals associated with travel. It can be associated with something else.
And meals with meetings or?
Yes, yeah, something.
Okay.
Yeah, baby stuff.
Councilmember McHenry?
A follow-up that just triggered my other question I had had. So for example, with the Snoqualmie Valley Governments Association, they have meetings that meals are provided and there's a cost to that. And I was curious how this policy or if we can tweak it. I wasn't sure, does that fall under there? If a meal's provided during a meeting and there's a fee associated with that meeting, does that come under here where we wouldn't get fully reimbursed, you know, going off of the rate that is allowed? Or is there a different wording we need to include to exclude those items?
So that actually Councilmember Hoag had brought that up and we did add a sentence that said, meals provided with registration at regional association meetings. So is that, would that cover it?
Yeah, and we do budget specifically for those meetings in all of our budgeting processes. So we do have that as far as in the budget document as a policy document as well. Anything else? All right. So then we will move on to Agenda Bill 20-68, ordinance Duval Municipal Code 4.10.080 for discussion. Ms. Mason?
Oh, which one was this? Sorry?
I believe this is yours, AB 20-68, ordinance Duval Municipal Code.
This is basic, it's basically the same thing, the same, it's just the ordinance that's related to the policy. So we had them in two separate agenda bills, just because one was the resolution and one was the ordinance.
Okay, so any further discussion on this topic? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring those forward to the next council meeting. Next up is Agenda Bill 20-69, TIB Grant Pavement Preservation Program for Discussion and/or Decision. Mr. Lenishewski?
Good evening, Council. Steve Lenishewski, City of Duval and other citizens and staff still in the room. The, the item before you has a unfortunate rapid history in going through the process of applying for the Urban Arturo program that we just recently took to council. We were working on the paperwork with the TIB group and unbeknownst to us, we thought it was an alternate year cycle. Our regional engineer asked why we hadn't applied for any preservation money yet. So we put this together. The basis of our selections is straight out of the TBD and it's recently adopted programming and the five roads that were included on it. I had a couple of questions today which arose. I apparently had a core map in there. Roney Road is a urban minor collector by federal standard. It was on the list. Staff prior to my arrival obtained new roads which hadn't been reclassified in the city in over 20 years. I think maybe 30 they were saying, so it's been a long time. So it was in December of 18 that we added some significant roads to the list, basically looping the entire city. I will provide a share screen real quick and let you see the map that is in fact encompassing the city of Duval. So basically all the perimeter routes outside of city limits is on there because it's a county road as well. But you have Main Street, Third Avenue, 275th, your east-west connections, Cherry Valley Road, Stevens, Bruitt, 275th, or 150th, Big Rock and then Roney. Staff pressed real hard on getting a full loop of federal classification. So to qualify for the program, we have to have federally classed roads for, for TIB money. So that was a point of clarification that was shared with me. The other items within the project packet included a small table. There were five projects listed. One project was provided last year by Puget Sun Energy where the city held their feet to the fire on some, some potholing along Stevens that you may recall, little patches here and there. So we forced them to pave that entire area, which they did. And another side effect of the map packet, we have some scoring sheets on the PMS system 2020 to 2025 that was draft. My memory was awoken today where that is a couple-year-old map that has not been updated. So ratings, if they don't, if roads don't get overlaid, they typically degrade. So we were looking at some numbers with Councilmember Napland on, on her question and you know, maybe other roads warranted some paving and some service outside of this, but the ones we had identified are on there. We didn't update the map last year from the year prior based on bringing forward the TBD to the community and hoping it would get voted in and passed. At that time, we talked about doing an update, which we haven't done based on unfortunate just timing of winter and then going straight into COVID. So we will add that to our to-do list for the years to come. But the point the matter is we need council approval to move forward with applications for grant through the TIB. It is due the 14th. So this is a one, one-time shot for this year's programming. The match we have recommended is 80% grant request. That does change based on our AVs. So we can ask for up to 85% and only require a 15% match, but we try to be fair and competitive as we can. We are early in our TBD's life cycle, but it would be great for the community to get projects done ASAP, showing that we're going to use the money for overlays and getting roads repaired as soon as practical as well as using as many dollars that aren't ours as possible. So we did speak with TIB. They're supportive of a $350,000 to $600,000 ask based on our estimates. Roney Road, we, we proposed pulverize, put back asphalt over top overlay. Excuse me, Brew Road, we proposed just an edge grind because the majority of the asphalt is intact and in good, in good operating order. We crack sealed it over the years. So it's, it's held up. So there's a little differentiation, those costs, but with that said, that, that was our recommendation moving forward based on our estimates and work that we've done. Are there any questions I can entertain before we have a hopeful motion on this project?
Councilmember Lingle?
First, just for the record, I've already talked to Steve about this. I don't want folks to think I'm not trying that collabora, collaboration. I think the basic approach here is fine. I think that it makes sense in these times to take the 80/20 split. What I recall is that our, our transportation improvement planning really doesn't set priorities per se. We sort of have these lists and I think we have to start considering that a little more carefully as we, we go into the budget process. The other thing is that if we, you know, proceed with this, we will then have four projects or three projects, four if we include 275th, but three projects in front of us where we might have additional financial requirements and we need to flush that out more carefully. And the way I look at this as somebody who's been a lender is we have risk and we have risk offset. So we need to assess our financial risk and that needs to be financially planned for. And to this end, what I mentioned to Steve and I hope other people will consider is that we really need to think through sort of the approach we take when we budget for these larger projects and how we structure the contractual relationships to better prepare us in the event that there might be an overage. I mean, it's inevitable in big project bidding that you can, it's a bit of a roll of the dice and, and I respect that that's a challenge that our director has. So I guess, these are the things I already shared with Steve. He can correct me if I've left something out or I have emphasized something else too much. But we, we will always be in this dilemma if we start, don't start figuring out ways for us to control costs sooner in the process than later. And in the case of 275th, I remember very clearly, I think it was my first council meeting, there were council members that were really nervous about it. We took the plunge. We are where we are. We still, we have to do some rethinking, which is a good thing. But you know, we're, we're getting into different times. And I'm really actually very confident that our Director of Public Works can come up with some ideas actually how we can better financially plan as well as control costs. So that's what I talked to Steve about and I wanted to share it with everyone.
Thank you. Councilmember Napland?
So I, I did have a quick little conversation before the meeting and one thing that came up and I just really want to recognize the Public Works Department about their always being proactive at looking and seeing what grants we can obtain. And he shared an amazing number with me. I think he said something like 55% of the cost of the projects we've done in the last, was it 20 years have been paid for by grants. Do you remember what you were telling me? You told me a really amazing number and I.
So TIB has a great website. Since 2000, since the year to about 2000, we've done 12 projects with TIB participation. So our total project costs are 19,000, 19,506,935. Of that, TIB has contributed $10,931,058. And the city's share has been only 34% and we've had some federal money on a couple of the larger jobs too. So TIB is a great partner. Us, like I said, they asked us, why aren't you applying? There's not a lot of granting agencies that call you and say, oh, by the way, here's the, there's a pot of money. You know, no one's going after it or make sure you go after it kind of thing. So it's, it's been good news. And it's been sidewalks, you know, arterials, corridors, overlays, the whole nine yards. And as far as kind of the overall planning with the TBD, it has its own five project list. We will certainly update that should we conclude some very quickly because one of them was done by Puget Sun Energy. Like I said, if we get these two done, that's three. Well, the one on 145th has two development projects that are in preliminary discussions with the city on their development potential, which would knock off a majority of that project itself. So that leaves you like 150th and 150th, we need to dive into deeper on the capital element because are we going to pave, you know, 52 feet curb to curb or is that road going to look like something different, you know, with a road diet of sorts? So, so there you go.
Thank you. So the, the one little follow-up question that I had, it falls a little bit on the same lines of what Councilmember Lingle was mentioning is you know, we would pay 20%, but any overage, we would pay 100% of the overage. And so that's our risk. And I think that that's what she was trying to bring up. So if we did win both grants, you know, the amount that we would expect to have in the TBD fund would just, I think, just meet it. And so if the project went over, we would be having to dip into other funds. I, if I'm looking at the numbers correctly, I didn't actually calculate it. But, so that is something I feel a little bit nervous about. I, I do think it's great to apply for them. I just, how confident are we on these project cost estimates? I think that is, that is where I feel quite nervous.
I think in general, you can never be confident of project costs until you get the bid. They're constant flux.
Yeah. So staff provided this estimate. We've over quantified, we have contingencies built in. We've used today's numbers, knowing that there is as new as possible. But you know, pavement is specifically priced relative to oil. So that is out of all of our control. The good news is no one's doing much. So hopefully oil levels stay where they are. I think the point two and one question Councilmember Napland had earlier was, do we have to expend it in 2021? There's no information that says we can't push it into 2122. So I think, you know, going over revenues with Plant Director Mason, I think we were pretty conservative in our, in our estimates. So that's good news as long as, of course, sales tax keeps generating because it's 2/10 of the percent on sales and use tax. But every month that goes by, we have another amount to go into it. And, and by no means are we interested in doing this without money. So I know TIB is very flexible. Should we be awarded a grant? If there is money, they have authorized, I didn't make a note and I probably should have because I went through all the numbers today. They have authorized additional monies over grant ask, should they be warranted because of changed condition and budget considerations. So they are flexible. However, if you know, you go to their site, they've suspended programs for the next budget cycle because we're in a pandemic, revenues are down, city, state, county wide. So there are things that are out of all of our control. We're going for two grants. Should we be awarded one and not the other? We have maybe an easier choice to make. Should we be awarded both and don't want the other? We could not use it and, you know, go from there. But I think, I mean, we're, if we don't ask, we'll never get it. And if we don't ask to get someone else's money, we'll use ours. And I don't know that we would have done $20 million of the projects in the last 20 years if, you know, people all around the table hadn't pushed to go for it and try to, you know, capitalize on other people's programs and grants, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Lengel.
I don't want to belabor this point, but I do think there's ways to incrementally reevaluate budget estimates as you go along in the planning process. And, and that's what I was alluding to when I referred to, I see he's nodding, our director, you know, to think about. The, the second point I would make is that, you know, this is one of my bifurcate things. There's a value in approving going forward. There's also value in, in the budget process, preparing for not just that 20%, but also what might unfold. And so I, I don't have a problem going forward with these grant applications because we, we do have, first of all, it's a leverage opportunity. But second of all, we have done fairly well with our grant applications. There was one other thing I wanted to say about this, which is, you know, it's a little fuzzy right this second. Oh, I see we're at 9:16, we need a meeting extension. I guess I need to eat chocolate, but anyway. But I, these projects are incredibly important and we want to see them happen. But at the same time, you know, we, we've got to start evolving our internal capacity around how we manage them. And so I'll just leave it at that. I'm sure, you know, there'll be more discussion on some of these grants. But I do support moving forward.
Councilmember McHenry.
I'm, I was ready to make a motion unless anyone else had more to discuss. So I move we suspend council procedures in section 5.6, requiring additional review and finalize this item at this meeting.
I'll second.
All right. So Councilmember Henry has moved to suspend the rules. Councilmember Lengel has seconded any discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Councilmember McHenry.
I'll go ahead and also move to approve Agenda Bill 20-69, authorizing the Public Works Director to apply for and submit a grant application to the Washington State TIB for the arterial preservation program for Roney Road and Brewett Road.
Second.
Right. Councilmember McHenry moved. Councilmember Napland seconded to apply for the grant. Any further discussion? Councilmember Lengel.
Just a point of reminding ourselves, when we did this Transportation Improvement District, we also said we were going to be mindful of smaller, specific improvements to the neighborhoods. And so I don't want us to lose that, that point that's in the, in the planning for the project.
It's definitely top of mind for us internally. So thank you for that, pointing that out, Councilmember Lengel. All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And moving to Agenda Bill 20-71, reject all bids for the 275th Complete Streets Project. Mr. Lenishewski.
Buttons everywhere. Excuse me. Steve Lenishewski, Public Works. Hello, everybody again. So in the packet, you had a bid proposal, bid summary with good candidates who provided the city of Duval with bids for what we had hoped at some point to award as a contract. Going through the bid summary, it was a little foggy on a couple of items and we felt it best to clarify those items. The bulk of the items confirming with Department of Revenue are sales tax, sales and use taxes applicable to road and right of way projects. Clarifying that the park slash activity station elements are not of that same sales and use tax exception. And I think moving that forward would have been a little risky on our part with, you know, not knowing what is and isn't really buried in here and there. And, you know, what do you get out of it? So we need to clarify, we want to, we want to throw the biz out for that reason. 5% mobilization was missed by three out of the five bidders. It is in the detail for item. However, on the bid tab table, whether they read it or not, you know, I can't say. So they provided that. We would prefer to have competitive and accurate bids. So we would like to just clarify the bid tab table as well as keep the language the same for that matter. Another item that we discovered today too, as we made the activity area an alternate. Everybody recalls the alternates on this project are, the project itself is the base. The alternate is the crosswalk and rapid flushing beacons. The other alternate is the activity stations. And the other alternate is excavation and conduit preparation for PSC light installation that we buy ourselves. I noticed, I know the landscape of these bids isn't necessarily what we're talking about, but the landscape item relative to the activity stations wouldn't go in should we not choose the activity elements. So we will bifurcate that too and separate those two items out in a rebid. Should this be rejected and if we go to rebid? So those are the four big kind of changes that we need to clarify because again, they could say it wasn't in their sales tax or it was. And then we're negotiating out of the gate and we don't want to be in that position. And we want to make sure it's clean and clarified from the start. So that said, that is the information provided on why we recommend rejecting and clarifying and then rebidding.
Thank you, Mr. Lenishewski. Any discussion on the rejection of the bid? And as it's late, I would suggest sticking to the Agenda Bill directly. We have one more item and it's almost 9:30. Mayor Portem Remington.
I'll let Councilmember Lengel go first. I was ready to move forward. I think Steve did a great job of explaining that, you know, we need a clarification. We can clean this up. I believe this is just a continuation of our 275th discussions. And so I don't see us needing to do a suspending our three tetral. I think we can just move forward on this and unless others have a discussion, I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I support rejecting the bids. I also support removing the recreation area and related agreements from the, the list of priorities. Maybe that's the best way to say it. And I say that because I'm, I've never been convinced that specific location is the best location for those additional recreation improvements. So those are my comments and I'm happy to second Mayor Portem's motion.
Okay. We don't have a motion yet, but Mr. Lenishewski appears has a comment.
Just to be clear, we were bifurcating the landscape required of the activity area. We weren't removing it from the bid package per se. It is still an alternate, but we will clarify the landscape associated is part of that alternate and not part of the base. And for that matter too, we will be looking at some other street trees. PSC is very specific on what will be allowed. So we don't know what the trees cost because they were provided in a, in a lump sum. But after doing some research, that specific tree is fairly expensive. So we have to work with the PSC to maybe see if there's an alternate that we can provide that might be very similar, but maybe not as costly, so.
Councilmember Napland.
I'm actually happy to hear that, that there was a tree that was really pushing that dollar amount high potentially. I, it does seem a little bit strange to spend so much money on landscaping on this project when it's not our property. And, you know, we were just going to put a simple sidewalk in and there were already existing trees. And so we're, we're taking out existing native vegetation to put in new expensive vegetation. And all of this costs a lot more than the grant amount that we received. So it's, it's a little bit disappointing. I hope we can look through this and find ways to trim back that landscape cost. It's just, you know, we, when I look at all the projects of where we really have some serious safety needs and we receive comments from, you know, some constituents about, you know, safety needs on 150th. We, you know, we have a lot of places where we really need to get some sidewalks placed. And, you know, expanding this into a, into a, a big landscaping project on someone else's land that then we will have to maintain because the, the use permit with Puget Sound Energy says, if we put any improvements in there, it's ours to take care of forever. So I think we have to be very careful about how much landscaping and how far deep into that Puget Sound Energy corridor we go because that's ours forever to take care of. So I just wanted to provide that feedback. It's, it's pretty disappointing that it looks like the lowest bid is, meaning we're going 100% over budget. I think it's concerning, so.
And yeah, thank you for that. So just to be clear to, and fair to all, the numbers are provided with sales tax kicked on top. So that will either be, and from the research too, in our own projects, you know, if we have an 8.8% sales and use tax, it isn't applied to everything on a road project. You still pay, it looks about under 1% when you cover it over all the, all the elements because some of them still require sales and use tax to pay. So that number should come down. The base bid itself is the base. Please remember, I recommended the safety improvements for the rapid flushing beacons and the lighting, which was way after the fact. Staff had no engineer on record when they went forward with this work. Again, I checked all the timelines today because it has been a long project. We'd like to get through it and have it be, you know, a success and, you know, be meaningful for the community. And, you know, it's anecdotal evidence. We all live around town. This intersection is frequented by more youth without parents than anywhere else. I, I testify, you know, under oath, like if I had a counter in time, I'd go do it. But this is an area that has significant youth using it without supervision. And it is busy, it is terribly lit, even in the middle of summer. I was walking, I went and picked my daughter up at 10:00 PM at Karen Park, brought her home. There was 15 kids walking in small pods all down 150th. So I mean, it's, and lighting, please go look at it in the dark. It is terrible. So I understand, one thing I made an error on too, in the, in the revenue allotted, we did a budget amendment and we did include some street lighting under the 101 fund, which certainly is eligible as I asked and it was one of those items. So I know the project over what we had hoped is higher, but I did personally add elements that were not considered originally either. So I take full credit for that. But also they are warranted and, you know, as a registered engineer and your city engineer as a Public Works Director, they're significant and they are meaningful. And they, my obvious opinion is they must get done. So funding aside, they're part of other projects and a significant need for safety on a very high use area. So that's.
I do want to add. No, it's okay. Mr. Lenishewski also did want to add that, you know, this, getting this 275th corridor is with sidewalks and improvements has been 20 years in the process. This is the last link. We're never going to own the property. So if we're going to provide those safety improvements, we have to make some concessions. And Mr. Lenishewski would not have come forth with these additional items if I was not fully in support and recognize the need and the positive investment for our community's health and safety, particularly the youth using the park and those that want to utilize our sidewalks throughout the entire city. So, Councilmember Lengel.
You know, let's take a breath here. Nobody is questioning the importance of safety on the sidewalk or the genuine belief and commitment of our Director of Public Works with respect to safety. I, I don't want that impression to linger because I don't think that's what anybody's saying. The difficulty is we're in an over budget situation and we have to navigate through it. And by rejecting these bids, he has an opportunity to help us get there. And that, I think, in calmness, conveys our confidence that he can come up with some ideas. So I would like to see a motion since we waived the procedural requirements. I'd like to hear if there's a motion on the floor so that we can move on with a difficult project that, as you say, has been in the making for a long time.
Here, I'm ready to make a motion. Mike Remington.
Go ahead, Mayor Portem.
I move that council approve Agenda Bill 20-70, Contract 275th Complete Streets, Rejecting Current Bids and Rebidding With the Necessary Clarifications.
This is a motion to approve the resolution rejecting those bids.
Correct. Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. So Mayor Portem made the motion. Councilmember Lengel seconded to reject all bids. Any further discussion? Councilmember Hoag.
Before I comment, I do have a question about the project. How long would the project take?
Mr. Lenishewski, you're on mute.
I know, I was yelling next door. It was not a very long project, but I do not know. I can email you guys out when I email you the numbers for Kennedy.
Okay. So I, I just, I would, I personally feel that expanding this project to where we're maintaining a much larger area than what I thought we initially intended to, to do there is to be kind of, it's disappointing in that the bid came in 100% over what. I, I don't know that I would have pursued this project personally if, at that price, if I'd known it was going to go 100% over.
And Councilmember Hoag, I would like to respectfully request that we have a motion on the floor and that council stick to the motion at this point, to speak to the motion, not the project as a whole. and that council stick to the motion at this point, to speak to the motion, not the project as a whole.
So everyone else got to comment on the project that we.
The motion, no. Councilmember Hoag, the motion, we had discussion and a motion was made. We're past our normal time, so I requested when we started the conversation to try and stick to the topic. It's procedural and, you know, I, I'm just making the request. Council can make their own decisions.
I believe the rest of the council got to discuss this project. And I'm very disappointed that I really, I'm, this project needs to be discussed.
That is correct. That is absolutely correct. But once a motion's on the floor and the discussion's done, council members.
The motion was on the floor. You tried to talk and nobody, nobody acknowledged me.
So I did not see any hands. So I'm sincerely apologetic, so then please proceed.
So if we're going to continue like maintaining other people's property, does that mean we're going to start maintaining all the neighborhoods association properties? We're setting a precedent here. And I know we need to really be thinking about what we're doing. And I don't think that expanding the project to the extent that we've done is something that we, that I certainly wasn't expecting that. A simple sidewalk, lighting is very important. I just don't see, the project kind of got out of control in my eyes. And anyways.
So Mr. Lenishewski, can you address the, the working relationship that we've had with Puget Sound Energy over the years and how this does not impact HOAs in any way whatsoever?
So I guess the question at hand maybe is a little different. But the mayor is asking relative to Councilmember Hoag. And yes, the area is there. We do not maintain, you know, specific HOA areas when they maintain their areas. You know, the public benefit on arterials is certainly much different than, you know, residential roads and neighborhood access. So if you are interested to see the benefit of what does happen, and I think everybody here probably has used the space a time or two. But just an aerial of the two seventy-fifth corridor, this is north of Judd Park. This is all Puget Sound Energy property. So we have enhanced and expanded park space. We have a parking lot adjacent to a road that serves this facility. We host a restroom on that same property. And the working relationship between us and PSC is, is great because they allow us to do that. They could kick us off at any given time, but they've never fought us on it because we participate in maintaining their system. But we are also getting a giant benefit for that trade off, right? You know, parking lot with however many stalls are there, walkway, additional safe play space away from the road and at least walkway space connectivity to the neighborhood. That is not permitted by any means, but that is the city over time reaching out and providing that. You know, it's a benefit. So I think it's, it's, I understand the point of the matter and I appreciate that we don't want to overburden our already burdened staff. But again, sometimes empowering staff to facilitate their own vision gets more work. And I, I do believe that. And I believe, you know, you can see, I think this image change, can you still see that it's an IMAP image now and not usable anymore? So, you know, this is a, you, you can migrate through time and you see the improvement made. And I don't think anybody would argue that it's not an improvement. Again, both ends of this corridor have been enhanced because of a capital project that was adjacent, trying to mitigate complaints we had received over time with blockbys encroaching on sidewalks and other areas, people and their fences aren't approaching on sidewalks. Yes, it's PSC, but we're partners in this. So I guess, you know, the city's done a good job doing what it can do. We've managed what we can do and we always want to provide a better project and service than we've done in the past and we strive for that daily. So that's, that's our, you know, that's how we operate. And I guess that's all I have to say to that. I don't know if Mayor, we have to extend past nine thirty or ten?
We do, we need a motion to extend. It is nine thirty-seven.
Mayor Mike Remington, I move that we extend our meeting past nine thirty.
Second, McHenry. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes. And Councilmember Hoag, again, I apologize, I did not see any hands while I was watching the screen. So it was completely unintentional to not, to skip over anyone. And so thank you for providing those comments. And now do we have any more, more discussion on the motion on the table, which is to reject all bids and go back out? Councilmember McHenry.
I just wanted to clarify, I don't know if I blinked too long and missed it, but did we actually have a motion to suspend our rules on this agenda bill? We do.
No, Mayor Portem Remington pointed out that this has been in the public multiple times.
Okay.
And there was likely not a formal need to suspend the rules on something that's been in the public domain for a year and a half.
Yeah, maybe that's a COW item coming up so we can all get a better clarification on what that is or isn't to whatever project, if it's associated or not. That'd be helpful because, yeah, we just kind of felt the suspenders, put as much as we can on it.
Here, that would be my suggestion. I know there's, this is an important topic. Council has some real important input they'd like to have and some review. So while we have a motion on the floor, I, I'd just like to say I'm more than happy to work with you and getting this on the COW so we can have that more robust discussion. Concerns can be looked at, but I think this would be a good time to move forward on the motion.
Yes. All right, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And then we will move on to our final item of business. Ms. Thomas. And this will be the agenda bill AB twenty dash sixty-three, the interim floodplain ordinance for discussion and or decision.
Good evening, Mayor and Council again. Let me just get to the right slide. So we've been talking about the interim floodplain regulations for a couple of months. We originally were going to try and get a permanent regulation in, but due to the timing and a federal mandate to get it in and activated or go through publication and meet that five day, we were going to be one, we would have one day. And so we didn't want to take that risk. And we talked about this a little bit last time where cities were at the Department of Ecology and FEMA to try and get an extension so that cities wouldn't have to go through an interim floodplain ordinance. And there are quite a few that are doing it. So we're one of those cities. We've worked really collaboratively with FEMA and DOE. We've had, we've had good dialogue. But we're also at the point where we do need to adopt the interim ordinance. And we looked at that at the last meeting. And then our city attorney, both our previous one and our new one have reviewed it, although Daniel did just a quick look because it had already been reviewed by Madrona Law. And so one of the things that you have to do when you are adopting an interim ordinance, within 60 days, you have to hold the public hearing. So we do have that scheduled for September fifteenth. We're in the process of issuing a DNS. That'll actually be issued next week on August eleventh. And then after that time, we'll go back to the Community Planning Commission and Council on September through November and do a final engagement process and then adopt a, a final ordinance. Although we're at the point where Department of Ecology and FEMA have done a full review of that. I did get a, a couple of extra minor comments and I apologize, I didn't get them until yesterday. And so I had to go, I went through them yesterday and made and updated the policy. So on this screen, and I sent, we sent this out in email today. There were two requested changes. And so what I did is I did a snapshot and put them in this presentation. So section fourteen eighty-four oh five oh D two. They wanted the addition of documentation of the elevation of the bottom of the lowest horizontal structural, structure member V or VE zones. I didn't want to fight it, but I can tell you this is really related to coastal flooding. And I'll show you a picture really quick and I will work with them as we go through the permanent ordinance. And so this is just kind of a description of your normally, what your flame, your floodplain would look like if you were in a river. So you have flood fringe and then you have base flood elevation. You have a normal channel. This upper illustration on the left is what you would see in, in a coastal scenario. And that's where you get your V and your VE. But I will work with DOE and FEMA on that just to make sure they understand that we're like, while we're tidally influenced, we don't get wave action here. And just as a reminder, this is a snapshot of our floodplain map that's, that becomes effective this month. And so you'll see over here is the city of Duval. And in general, we have, you know, we're, you know, zone A, AE. And we don't have the V. So once again, even here in the legend, it says coastal flood zone. So we'll work with them on that. It doesn't hurt technically for it to be in there. I was just, I was surprised. And then the last requested item that they wanted, which I, I agree with, and that's in section fourteen eighty-four oh six E. It said subdivision proposals. It should really have said subdivision and other development ultimately. Because when you look at the next sentence, it does say all subdivisions and new development shall. So at this time, you know, staff doesn't have any other additions. And this evening we are asking, I am asking council to approve the ordinance. If there are any questions, I can answer them.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Napland.
I hope this is a quick one. It, it looks like a very technical document and it's, it's basically following requirements. Is that correct, Director Thomas?
Correct.
Is there anything in here that we would be choosing, that we wouldn't have to choose? I mean, that's always what I would focus on as a council member when trying to make a decision. Are we, are we agreeing to do something we don't have to do? Or is there something in here that, you know, we should be paying more close attention to? Because otherwise it, it looks like a very straightforward technical document. And I, you know, your skill level is so, you know, impressive. I don't, I don't really, wouldn't have anything to add.
That's a great, it's a great question. This is a really technical piece of legislation. And honestly, it's, it, there is a model ordinance. It comes out of the federal government down to Department of Ecology. So my contact, Dave Radabaugh, who I work with on a, a couple of committees, he was actually instrumental in drafting it. So it, it really is the mandate. We, we did do some modifications where we didn't necessarily adopt everything. And I did get the one comment, obviously, that you saw that they wanted us to adopt the coastal flood, the V and the VE. So I'll go back and have that discussion with them. I just wasn't able to talk to them. You know, anything that we can, you know, keep out, we do. The one good thing that we have going for Duval, and we talked a little bit about this, is the city owns the majority of the, of the floodway and the floodplain. There are some areas where, you know, where we don't. You know, and for the most part, what we have in that area and those zones are our parks. But we also have storm and sewer outfall, so we do want to be cognizant. It's also in shoreline. It's also a critical area. There are so many overlapping policies that it, it does. At, at times you start to figure out what, you know, what are we really doing? But floodplain ordinance updates seem to hit us about every 10 years and floodplain maps happen. This is only the second one I've been a part of in my career. And this one has been worked on since, I believe, ninety-six or ninety-seven. So there, I guess I should have said it shorter and I apologize as the planner. But yeah, we, you know, we look at the minimum and we have to pass through the gate. And so this is what we could do to pass through the gate.
Okay, I'm comfortable moving forward, but it sounds like there's other people who might have comments.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lengel.
Yeah, this is a quick comment. Given the recent, this, I guess is political, but I think it's also factual, dramatic reversal of environmental policy in this country. And you can't answer this today, but it seems like, I know it seems crazy, but this wave thing, you know, could that somehow in another extreme situation impact our eligibility for something like FEMA? I mean, I, I would hope not, obviously.
It's.
I'll put it out there because these are very, very crazy times environmentally. It's shocking. It's scary. I worry about our future generations. So I just thought I'd throw it out there.
Yeah, it's, it's a good, it's a really good question, but technically we do not have V or VE within our boundaries. If they, you know, if we decide to keep it and just let it go, you know, obviously long term, we can do that. What we try to do is go with just what the legend and the designations are. But, you know, do we want to go to battle on it? Of course not, if that's all we have to have on it. We are, you know, we are seeing changes to, to environmental regulations at a federal level, but this state has higher levels of protection. So there is some protection on that. And we'll, we'll have that, rest of that conversation another day because I think it will impact our next shoreline update and our next critical area update potentially.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoag.
I thought it was kind of interesting to read that we're going to, well, it's just an interim ordinance that we're voting on, but then we're doing a, a public hearing after the fact. I thought that was kind of interesting because don't we normally do them beforehand? But it was, it was.
Yeah, that's a really good question. So for emergencies or when we do an interim, you, you're required by statute to just hold the public hearing within 60 days. Technically, we were going to actually have it this evening just to cover it. But we thought, okay, we have the 60 days. Let's go ahead and, and do that, you know, at a, a future meeting. And I mean, the reality is, is we're going to go through the exact same exercise twice in substantially the same way. But because of COVID and the way public, the, you know, public meetings are going and then only having like one day of like flexibility, we just chose that this was probably the right way to go. And that was kind of a regional approach. But yes, it is interesting. So yeah, so just as a reminder to everybody, emergency ordinances and intrums really are exceptions to the rule. We don't do them very often. And, and that's because you don't have a, a good public process. And that's why you're still mandated to do a public hearing within those 60 days. And if you don't, then you really should not, you know, you, you wouldn't have that ordinance. You know, it wouldn't be legally binding if you don't do it. Like we are required to, that's what our ordinance says.
Councilmember Napland.
Unless anyone has something else to say, I'll make a motion to approve AB twenty dash sixty-three interim floodplain ordinance.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Napland made the motion. Councilmember Hoag seconded to approve the interim floodplain ordinance. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, we have no further business. And unless there are objections, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.